I'm in a riot.
Wanda, how did we get along when that?
You're starting to get me a dollar.
No, we didn't. We offered.
I hate you.
Ah.
It's the.
I can't hear her right.
Six o'clock on July fifteenth. Welcome all of you to our July fifteenth County Commission meeting. Make sure your cell phones are muted or turned off and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
States of America and the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hoorah.
Again, thanks for all of you for coming to our July fifteenth meeting. Patty, would you please call the roll?
Dan.
Here.
Don.
Here.
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 Here. I need a motion to any abstention, abstancions from any or financial conflicts of interest from any of the board members.
I do not.
I do not.
I do not.
I do not.
I said it at the same time, Ryan.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Didn't hear that.
I move to approve the approval of the amended agenda, which deletes item fourteen, which is the sheriff's twenty twenty-five second quarter report and corrects item seventeen to read June twenty-seven minutes, June thirtieth minutes, and July first minutes.
I guess it. Okay. I have a motion by Wanda, second by Dan to approve that, the agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Now's the time for, well, six oh five is public comment. I'll read this and then we can start moving into it. Public comment is a time for persons to address this body on any subject. No action may be taken on a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action will be taken. Each person has up to three minutes to speak. There shall be no personal attacks against the members of this body, county staff, individuals, or organizations. The chair has the authority to enforce this policy. Failure to adhere to these rules may result in forfeiture of the remaining speaking time per county policy. The Yankton County Commissioners will not engage in conversation or make statements during public comment. Gary, do we have anyone on the list? Hey, we have Richard Velik. You want to speak up, step up to the microphone? State your name and address, please.
Richard Velik, four three nine zero four three oh four Street, Yankton. And I'm here tonight on the CUP for the gravel pit behind my house for the what's going on back there again with the stop sign violations, no sheriff presence, dust control zero, which was spoke told to me that it would be a very good dust control program. Noise absolutely crazy. Twenty trucks per hour. Wrong answer. I mean, this, it's crazy what's going on back there. Just today, they started hauling the trains back in there with the product that's going for the asphalt. And they're literally coming by, I mean, and coming out of there running. I got the videos. I mean, they, they run it constantly. CSI, pretty good. Don't see a lot of them running the stop signs. Some do. Saturday, they ran all day from six in the morning till eight thirty at night. No flagman, which I was told, yes, that was not part of their deal, not to have a flagman, but I, in the meeting I came to, it was talked about flagman. It was talked about signage. There's no more, there's one sign more than what was ever there. And it's a sign, a four by four sign, three quarters of mile away that has a flagman on it. Doesn't say flagman, just a guy standing, you know, whatever. So this guy sits there about a quarter mile away from where the stop sign is and stops stuff. I don't like, well, he puts a slow sign up for the stuff coming from the west, but nothing coming out of my driveway. So a month ago, I come out of my driveway. Here comes one of the trains up out of there. And he ran down my lane right at me on purpose. Because the night before I had called in here to tell them to get this under control, get the sheriff out there. And then Ralph showed up out there fifteen minutes later. Went down in there to the three that trucks that were sitting there, talked to them. Then the next morning, just by chance, all of a sudden, I get a truck coming out of there and it runs right towards me. I mean, for no reason. He had no reason to do it. But somebody had talked to him and the trucks and whatever, and that's ridiculous. I mean, either get it under control or something's gonna happen. I mean, you know, the sheriff has been there one time. I would like to know how many tickets have been written to any of these truck drivers. Is there public? Can they know that? I don't know. I mean, I would like to know though. Because as a CDL driver, they ain't gonna like tickets and they should be written tickets. I understand there are eighty thousand coming out of there empty, the trains are, and it is hard to stop on that hill. That's not my problem. That's a stop sign. That means stop. So I'm at the point of, I mean, I don't know what to do. I want to get on the agenda for the next meetings.
You're at three minutes.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Rich. Any other public comments at this time? Seeing no one jump up and run up to the microphone, public comment is closed. Think we can move on to our next item on the agenda. Pathways. Will is here.
Good evening. Will Kennedy with Pathways, Executive Director. I do have Mallory Schulte and Sarah Marlowe in the crowd there on our board. Thank you for giving me an extra week to get in here and talk about our budget request for next year. It allowed us to put together some of our mid-year documentation compared to twenty twenty-four. In twenty twenty-four, when I first met with the board, the board kind of asked, I do several things, basically put, put our money where our mouth is with the changes we're making. And also come in and give updates on what's going on. I've been in quarterly. Several of you have come and taken tours. I appreciate it. One big thing I want to talk about is to reiterate the fact that we have closed our night by night program. That was the program that everyone associated with Pathways is the ladies and gentlemen that would come on site at seven in the evening, utilize our basement. They'd be allowed to shower, get a quick meal, and then back on the streets at seven in the morning. In looking at our needs versus our abilities, that program is one where we're not having the success getting people housed. We shut that down at the end of March. Since then, we have had between eight and ten bed nights of that type where we have someone show up in the evening and nowhere else to go. We've also been able to move our programs around to where our reentry program is now in the basement. It gives some differentiating between the families upstairs and the reentry gentlemen that are currently utilizing the basement. It also gives the reentry people a little more dignity being down there with their own space. It's been good. We're meeting with the parole officers. They like what we're doing. A couple more updates there are last year, we served sixty-one women, thirty-six men, and ninety children throughout the whole year. At midpoint this year, we're at twenty-seven men, forty-four women, and forty-eight children. So we're about on track there to meet the, the general need and go with the flow from last year. Here's the big change when we're gonna put our money where our mouth is. Last year's average length of stay was sixty-three days at Pathways. To this point in twenty twenty-five, it is at forty-seven days. That's a twenty-five percent decrease in bed nights our participants are spending at Pathways. That means we are getting them housed sooner. We're helping get them employed sooner. We're just doing everything quicker. And that's good for everybody because as we've talked about before, as much as Pathways does for people, a shelter is no place to be raising a family. It's a stop in the road, but we have cut that. Their tenure down by almost twenty-five percent. We also have a ten percent increase in successful outcomes when they complete the program. That means they report to us what their housing is and it's deemed by South Dakota HUD as an acceptable outcome. Sometimes we have people leave and they go with the family. They don't report where they're going. But the fact that we are able to report ten percent, that falls under the successful umbrella, I believe, is huge. One thing we always talk about when we're here is the indigenous medical cost that goes to the county because of homeless or transient people in Yankton. I would point out at this point that we are probably saving the county money because we are a huge enroller in Medicare for transient people in Yankton. Because of privacy laws, I can't go much into it, but one example we just had is we had an individual come in. We got him on Medicaid. He had a series of terrible health issues, including at least one ambulance ride, multiple trips to ERs, lengthy stays. There would have been no one to pay that had he not gotten enrolled. You know where that bill would have went. So we're working towards that there. And I really think the, the public that has come to us loves what we're doing. They do not miss night by night. Night by night was a good program in theory, but it wasn't where we could do the most good with our limited resources. And I will tell one little anecdote before I turn it back over. Our neighbor across the alley, I used to see him in town at the store or restaurant, and I would duck my head because he was always gonna tell me something that wasn't going right. And he was right about it and he, and I'd try and fix it. I saw him at Walmart the other day and he hunted me down. I thought, here we go again. And he thanked me. He said how much better it had been without the night by night program there and the changes we'd made, and he could see the difference. He also commented on how much better the shelter looks now. So by pulling back in, we're actually doing more with less, but we, we need the help. We need the funds. Questions for me?
I, I, I'll tell you a little incident that I had last week. My wife and I were going into one of the local bars and this guy was standing on the street, no shirt, shorts, backpack, extremely overweight, and started asking for money. So I talked to him a little bit and asked where he was from, what he was doing. He said, well, he sleeps in this, in the street now. He apparently spouted off to one of the ladies at Pathways and he was kicked out.
I can give you a ninety-nine percent certainty who that gentleman was and the things he said were unacceptable. And it wasn't the lady that exited him. It was me because I'm not gonna put up with my staff being treated like that.
Yeah, and I, I don't have anything wrong with Pathways in this incident, but he said he was from this Springfield program overnight and, and I just, why do we want Springfield people coming here?
If it's a person I'm thinking of, it's probably a reentry person that had some tie to Yankton, came on our program and then could not behave, which was why he was probably in prison to start with.
He told me he was from Sioux Falls. He said he, when he, when he was kicked out of Pathways, he tried to go to a place over by a church over there and apparently couldn't get in there either, so.
Not to be unsympathetic that bad behavior is bad behavior no matter where you are. And I get it. I don't, I don't want troublemakers here either.
How can we eliminate those, those groups from coming to Springfield?
Springfield is within our sixty-mile radius. If it is a reentry person, we, we have been asked by the state to lower our restrictions on who can come here for the reentry program. And we have said, no, they have to have a tidy Yankton family, work history, work possibility.
Did you say you had eight, eight of the DOC, like there being?
Though we're averaging about eight or nine bed nights. Our contract did not go up other than the standard bump per state, the little dab of money per day. And it's never a constant number because you can think about it as bed nights, or you can think about it just a pool of money because they're not always ready to come here right when a bed's empty.
What, how long has it, it's been going since March then, or when, when did that program?
That program started three or four years ago.
Okay. What's your success rate? You know, because recidivism is so high on that. Like, what, what are you seeing for the success rate on that?
Success rate for any parole program, we just had this conversation with the parole board, is terrible. It really is. It really is. We are in on par at about the twenty-five to thirty-five percent. If we can keep them more than three to four weeks, it goes up, but otherwise it's pretty low.
Is that? Twenty-five percent success rate or twenty-five percent?
Twenty-five percent success rate.
Okay, well, and you know, one of the issues I I see with that, that to me, that means that seventy-five percent of the people. And that program are gonna reoffend, right? Is that accurate?
Quite possibly.
And that means that our state's attorney over there likely has to prosecute him for. Something that was done, correct?
It depends if.
Potentially.
Potent- well, yeah. It depends if it's a a recurrence of a charge or a new charge. There's a lot of variables with that. And again. We keep going back to this, but this is. These are people that are coming to Yankton regardless of whether they're coming to us with some supervision and case management. And again, there, if we can keep them two to three weeks, we have an eighty-five percent employment rate with them. So the program works. And I can guarantee everyone in this room that if you gave us every dime we asked for, we would still. Not put a penny of that towards the reentry program because we have plenty of other places for it to go.
And just for clarification. When somebody reoffends, they don't necessarily go back to prison. There sometimes they're just re-put on probation. Sometimes they're held for a while then released from.
Sometimes. Jail though, right?
I'm sorry?
The street.
Yeah.
What?
Sometimes you sleep on the street.
Well, sometimes they sleep under the walking bridge too.
Um, I'm I'm gonna give this to you. I have other copies, but um, I was just at a conference where it talks. I appreciate what you're doing with the Medicare Medicaid, but with the new federal bills that passed. Uh, it sounds like a lot of that is gonna be shifted into the county. So there's some pretty good information that you have in there. And I have seen a difference and and I appreciate what you're doing. I think it's going in the right direction.
Thanks.
It's okay. I don't want, I don't wanna. Disunderstand me. I think you guys do a wonderful job by just telling you about this incident.
It's not a very sympathetic crowd. We're not the main side of us puppies and kittens, that's for sure.
So so we have legislators in peer South Dakota now that are. Saying, well, we don't want to build a new prison until we figure out a recider- reciderism problem. Because our reciderism rate is forty-three percent and taxes is only twenty-two. So from what you're telling me is is your basically reciderism rate.
It's not his rate.
If I'm.
It's.
Spelling or pronouncing it correctly.
Rate that are housed with us, yes.
Right, but what you're telling us tonight is you personally here in Yankton have a twenty-five percent. Success rate.
Roughly, yes.
Versus forty-three for the state of South Dakota. Is that a correct assumption?
It is.
So then in my mind, and I'm not, I'm not saying yay or nay. But in my mind, it it makes sense to to work on programs such as what you're what you're doing.
And we had, I wondered what had happened there because the the state parole board. We've had a lot of talks lately, so we knew something was going on and somebody's feet were being held to the fire. And they even told us they need to do a better job bedding the people that come out. And we're doing some things with treatment because part of recovery, these guys are coming out of prison still addicted to drugs.
So there's, there's no treatment they're getting in in prison at all?
They're coming to us that they're still addicted to drugs.
I mean, so they're getting drugs?
Even if you go to, so even if you go to treatment, I've had people that go to Keystone and within two days they're back using.
No, but I'm just saying that makes it uh.
It makes it tough.
A tough job, nearly impossible to do.
It does. Um, and and what we've talked about is the fact of the matter is as much as we want to be hardasses about it. Relapse is part of recovery. That's one of the steps. And we've got to, instead of just kicking them out onto the streets or back to jail, we've got to get them to core, someplace like that where they can get the help they need. Because otherwise it's just gonna be under the bridge.
Our our scram bracelets or drug tests, is that part of your stay?
That's up to the Department of Corrections. That's beyond our.
Well, I mean, I I would think if the state is. You know.
That's for alcohol.
The scram.
Only for alcohol.
Well, I I just don't.
Drug patches are for drugs.
I just don't think we're we're. Cause you want to run a good program. We want to keep our community safe. And why the state wouldn't require something like?
That's that's the question asked allegedly. Not to, not to ask us here.
No, but I mean, that's, we need to give you the tool, the state should be giving you the tools.
We can fix everything with those two things.
And unfortunately, we're in the same position as everyone else is, is we're.
Probably in worse shape than the state.
Where where funds are being cut all over and. Don't have, really don't have anything to say about the whole situation, but we appreciate you coming, Will, and appreciate what you're doing, so.
We should, you good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Will.
Next item on the agenda, Mike. You're up to the mic.
First thing on the. First thing I had on there is a approved resolution. It's a resolution to. Approve uh, half mile of West City Limits Road going. North of Highway fifty. Past our shop, Yankton County Highway Shop.
We're maintaining this in.
We're maintaining it anyways, and uh, we did apply for that grant. So we.
Is this the the one where the Yegis gets a nice road and the rest of us pay for it?
They're they're. Putting money into it. So if we do get the grant, they are going to.
If we don't get the grant, we're not gonna do the road?
Correct.
Okay. In that case, I would move, approve the resolution.
I need public comment on this first.
It was out of text.
So I need public comment on this. Anyone wanna be, uh, speak on this? Hearing none. Public comment is closed. Okay.
Now I'll remake my motion to approve the resolution twenty. Two zero two five hyphen six, provide, which provides that, um, if we get the grant, then we do the road.
Second.
We had a motion by Wanda, second by Ryan to. Approve the resolution twenty twenty-five dash six. Any further discussion? I guess the only thing that I would say or ask is they're planning on doing a. Fairly large.
Expansion.
Expansion onto that facility, so.
And then actually they're talking. After this one's built, a few more years down the road, they're going to do another one.
Yep. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Next, I have a. Approval for. Applying for uh, PE grant through the big grant. Application. Um, this bridge. This preliminary engineering grants is what we're applying for. Uh, this bridge that we would be going after is the one just on the east side of Valen. Um, it's starting to show some fatigue.
Is that the one where we approved that gravel hit over?
No, that was a mile north of there.
East side of Valen. Like just east of Valen?
That have been like.
Yep, right on.
On that little curve?
Yep, right on the highway there. Bridge is built nineteen fifty-six, about four hundred feet long. So yeah, well. It's just a first step. To. Getting it replaced, so.
I would move the application for the bridge improvement grant.
So I guess.
Motion by Wanda, second by Dan. To approve the grant application for Bridge six eight two three one one four nine. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. We're just about on time, Amy.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Commissioner Markort and uh, county commissioners. I'm here uh, on behalf of the Joint Powers Board, as you know. Yankton County, Clay County, the cities of Vermillion and Yankton uh, belong to a joint powers. Agreement and within that agreement. We occasionally purchase. Equipment to use uh, at our facilities, either the Yankton Transfer Station or the Vermillion. Tra- the Vermillion dumps landfill, excuse me. So uh, what the city of Vermillion is proposing here. Is to purchase a new bulldozer. Um, they're uh, needing to replace that piece of equipment. Uh, the cost is approximately uh, just over five hundred and eleven thousand. Uh, the city of Vermillion did apply for a state revolving loan fund. Uh, and grant at their meeting. Uh, in March, the Department of Ag and Natural Resources approved four hundred and nine. Thousand one hundred dollars uh, as a loan and a hundred and two thousand two hundred dollars as a grant. Uh, the loan term is three point two percent for seven years. Uh, in order to accept the funds, however, all four entities have to agree. Um, because we are taking on debt here together um, as a joint association. And so. Um, if you do approve this tonight, we are acknowledging that we are all as a body taking on that debt. And uh, be working to pay that off. I did hear that um, they do currently have a bulldozer that's. Met past its useful life and they are gonna surplus that and and sell that, so. Um, if passed this evening, um, I will ask that the chairman sign and we get uh. Patty to attest to it here so that we can move forward because. This is the last entity, the city commission approved it last night. Yankton City Commission's already been appro- approved by Clay County and City of Vermillion. Happy to answer questions.
So my question is, is in the, in the, in the agreement, it says that the city of Vermillion and the city of Yankton will control the funds. In your opinion, in your opinion only. Is.
Alright.
Because we do pay, I mean, every citizen pays in the city, pays a garbage fee.
Correct.
So in your opinion, in your opinion only, do you feel that that will? Continue to make the payment on this loan?
I think he's asking, where's the money come from?
Yes, uh, you know.
Between you, between the city of Yankton and the city of Vermillion, they, the garbage disposal fee. I'm assuming will support and make this pay.
Correct, and we also have haulers, private haulers. I realize that the counties don't pick up their own. Uh, refuse, but we have private haul haulers that come and pay a fee. And so we are getting in a sense a fee from them. Um, and they're operating a business, obviously, but so there is revenue coming in from the counties in that regard. I think it was uh, it was certainly before my time and I think it was Governor Janklow that established regional. Solid waste authorities and so uh, that's why we're in conjunction with them, but. Um, you know, we do have a revenue source, so we can change tipping fees and the city can change. Our solid waste fees. Now we control our solid waste independently, but we do have a a joint powers. Um, agreement for recycling and and transferring.
I think his question really is. Are you gonna come to the county for more money for this?
No.
There you go.
And I'm I'm the board member for the the joint powers and I I heard this presentation on our last meeting and. You know, it is a specialty bulldozer that's specifically. And and like Amy said, that they do generate quite a bit of funding and they have the ability to generate more and. So I I'm I'm very comfortable doing this. It's kind of a a good idea in the nineties to have a big joint. Working with the cities and the counties to do this. Otherwise, we'd have our own landfill and Clay County.
Absolutely.
So it's not gonna come back.
I just, I just wanted to make sure because this, if we sign this tonight, this is binding for seven years.
Yeah, and so that's a really good point, you know, it's a, it's a marriage and so we're kind of renewing. The vows here. Every time we take on more debt. Um, the agreement is actually changed and this isn't actually an amendment to the agreement that we're gonna stay together. For at least seven more years.
Right.
This is like the ninth time.
Tenth time. This is the tenth.
Yeah, so seventy years later.
Yeah.
So you said that the four entities are responsible. Uh, for the repayment of the debt. Should something happen? Is that what she said?
Uh, I don't think I said that. I said, I think I said in the joint powers authority. And so you are members of the joint powers authority. I don't think the county uh, contributes any uh, direct funding to that. I think that's all driven by revenues or fees.
That's been asked and answered, correct?
I believe, no, I believe if the loan weren't able to be paid off. Um, the state would come back onto the joint powers authority and I I presume. We've never had this happen before. I presume we would have to come up with the funds to pay off the loan or. You know.
Able of percentage for each of the four.
I'd have to call the Department of Revenue and ask how that would work because we, I don't think we've ever defaulted on a loan, but. I don't know the answer to that. I I think that, you know, a good example would be the scale project at the transfer station. I think the last time we talked. About changing our agreement was when the city did the scale project at the transfer station. That was. A multimillion dollar project and we took on the debt to do that and we're slowly paying that off. The city of Yankton and probably the city of Vermillion doesn't have the kind of cash upfront, nor do I think either of the counties to buy out outright. Uh, a bulldozer. So I think this is the best deal and um. I feel confident that.
If it doesn't work, because there's. Thousands of examples of. Things not working and going back to be repossessed. And I want to know whether if the other three entities can't pay, would they come to Yankton to pay it all?
I think what they'll do is they'll increase the fees for garbage service and. Every time you drive off across that scale, it'll cost more.
That would be a a city commission decision or in Vermillion, a Vermillion City Council decision, but we have to pay. Our debt, so we'd have to find a way. There's nothing probably prohibiting either city from transferring funds from another. Um, fund to help pay off capital if we need to. Uh, but because it's an enterprise fund, we can take on debt. Um, but the technical answer to that question. Uh, Commissioner Kettering, I don't have, and if you don't feel comfortable uh, voting this evening, I can. Find that out from the Department of Revenue and and bring it back to you, but um, that's never happened. To my knowledge in our history with joint powers or or any other uh, loan that we've received from the grant from the state.
Mister Chair, I'd move approval of the joint powers.
Second.
I have a motion by Dan, second by Ryan to approve the joint powers amendment to agree. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Thank you. And if I may bring you the document for signature?
Moving right along. Thanks, Amy. Moving right along, Gary.
Good evening. Uh, this is second reading of. Twenty-five Z N O two, Publix invited to attend the hearing and to present comments and testimony regarding proposed amendments. For Yankton County ordinance twenty twenty, Article Six, Low Density Residential District, Article Seven, Moderate Density Residential District. And Article Eight, High Density Residential District. At the conclusion of this hearing, the Yankton County Commission may recommend adoption.
Public comment?
At this time, I would open up for a public comment on this ordinance change. You want to read the ordinance change or?
That is too.
All of it?
No.
Basically, you can have six chickens, no roosters, and they need to have a twenty-five foot setback from the property line. Can't be located in the front yard. I mean, does that kind of sum it up?
Pretty much.
Yeah, so and.
Any public comment?
Dan.
It's, it's on one.
I don't move it closer to you.
Seeing no one jumping up and running up to the microphone, I would close public comment at this time. And uh, any further discussion from the committee?
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion by Dan, second by. Got a motion by Dan, second by Ryan to approve the ordinance change Z N twenty-five dash zero two. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Gary, you just want to stay at the mic.
We also have two plats tonight, first one being plat of lot one, lot two and lot three of maybe addition. Located in the southeast quarter of section nine, northeast quarter of section sixteen, township ninety-three north, range fifty-six west. Of the fifth principal meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Are they kind of separating a plot?
They're basically, yeah, breaking it into three lots. Uh, the current house is going to a family member and there might be one built and then they'll decide what they want to do with the other lot.
Kind of, you know, okay, there might be another opportunity for a house.
Correct.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Dan, second by Wanda to approve the maybe plat. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Second one's a plat of Van Bee, track three in the north half of the northwest quarter of section twelve, township ninety-six north. Range fifty-four west to the fifth principal meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota. Um, if you looked at the area all at all, you'll see the new lot lines just basically following a fence line that's out there. And, and so they're plating up the homestead.
Meets the.
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion by Wanda, second by Ryan to approve the Van Deek plat. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Goodroad is here. For a few minutes ahead, but we can move forward.
Welcome.
Uh, thank you for having me. My name is Gerald Goodroad, uh, I live at one twenty-five Sinek Drive, Yankton here. And I feel a lot of form, I think you guys maybe have that. Anyway, I moved into a new house in March third of twenty twenty-three. It's the only residence I have, but it's not like a second residence or anything. And when I went to pay my, um, twenty twenty-four first half taxes due in twenty-five, I was just questioning them a little bit. And they were telling me that on the taxes, it shows that my house is unoccupied, which it hasn't been occupied since March twenty-third. So I'm being taxed as an unoccupied house, which pointing to, uh.
Is that unoccupied or unowner occupied?
No, it's, it's, I, I, I don't know how it's better.
Yeah, you're, it's being taxed as unowner occupied.
Yeah, I'm the owner. I, and I live in the house and like I say, it's the only thing like it's a second house I did that part of time. It's my resident. In a way, when I talked to Patty, she was telling me that, you know, that we are being charged as the owner unoccupied. So she says it's running about sixteen hundred dollars a year. Uh, for that, and I'm, so in twenty-four, my twenty-four taxes due in twenty-five, I are there. And then I didn't realize until I was there, my twenty-five taxes is already showing again that it's nonoccupied. And so I'm trying to get a wrong right, whether it's my fault, who, and that, far as I'm concerned, that doesn't make any difference. It's a wrong that just should be made right somehow. And I don't know how you would do it, whether it's a rebate or whether you readjust the taxes accordingly or how you do it. But that's what I'm asking is that I go back and shown that it's, uh, was owner occupied all this time. And, uh, you know, that's kind of it. If there are any questions, I don't know, but it's, it's pretty straightforward. And it's quite a bit, I mean, so that's why I'm, I kind of pursued it. And especially when I found out it was twenty-five taxes due in twenty-six is also showing that already. So I'm asking for whatever needs to be done to justify it, I guess.
Have you filed the paperwork for owner occupied status?
What's that?
Have you filed your paperwork for your certification for owner occupied?
I did that.
Okay.
The new taxes that'll come this fall and so it should show that it's, that I'm owner occupied now. So what is the.
I know there's really strict rules on it has to be in by a certain date or, or we, we're not able to because of the law, you know. Yeah.
I didn't realize.
I'm sorry, you have to, you have to talk at the microphone so our at-home viewers can hear.
I'm just saying, I'm not really blaming anybody. It's probably much my fault to anybody, but I've lived on the same farm for my whole life. And I did realize what I was really supposed to do until I accidentally kind of found this out. And so I'm just trying to make a wrong right, no matter. And like when I talked to the tax people, it turns off, they said, well, you had a chance when they sent the form out. You got so much time, well, I didn't realize, I didn't know that, I guess.
Tyler, do you have any guidance on, I, I think the law is pretty clear, doesn't it need to be in by a certain date or it doesn't apply? And. I get, I, I mean.
I, I think, I think the, although I can sympathize with Mr. Goodroad, I think the problem is that we've had several other people come before the commission. And request a similar thing and we've declined to do that. And I think modifying it or making an exception would set a poor precedent.
Can I ask you a question?
I guess, I don't know if there's a rule against it.
If, if they're asking the same thing I am, why are you not approving it? I mean, if, if this was an honest mistake someplace.
Because there's a deadline, kind of like April fifteenth is the deadline to file your federal taxes. And if you don't ask for an extension, they penalize you, interest and penalties. So if you missed the deadline, I guess you missed the deadline. Just saying.
Well, okay, I can argue with, you know, you, you guys got your rules. And I can understand maybe the twenty-four due in twenty-five, but I don't understand. Yeah, I know that's done in what, November or whenever that's done, but.
April.
Or whatever, but I, I don't know, now I'm being charged twice again in another year for.
Who knows the date that it, that owner occupied?
I'm sorry?
What is the date that owner occupied certificate has to be filed with?
I want to say April, if you go, yeah, it's April something. I, there's, if you go upstairs outside the director of equalization office, there's pamphlets on the wall. I believe one of those pamphlets has the deadline in it. For some reason, I'm saying April thirty.
April twenty-five, twenty, April twenty-fifth.
See, I was close.
Trying to make a wrong.
And then, and then we got, is this your certificate right here? And they said that was received June seventeenth of this year. So if you would have won, you're good for next year, but that would have been.
Twenty-fives in due in twenty-six.
In, you said April thirty?
April twenty-fourth.
That would have had been stamped. April thirty.
Tax day.
And, and.
I was just looking at Michelle.
Oh, I just looked at the Department of Revenue.
Guys with you.
March.
And I understand.
March fifteenth?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I understand, but.
I've tried that for the IRS.
That's, that's the rule that we have to follow. I mean, Tyler, what'd be your recommendation at this, as a state's attorney, if it was, because we have.
Turn your microphone on.
On.
I think in the past, we have not.
I don't, I don't remember us ever have proven.
Yeah.
One of these.
Uh, we've had him.
Every year we have.
Yeah, every year we seem to have one.
Or two.
When in the, when in the purchase process?
I'm sorry?
When during the purchase process, this of, of, of buying a new home, should this be addressed? Should it be the realtor that addresses this to the, the customer or should it be our registered deeds?
It could be when a person comes to pay their real estate taxes, they can say, my real estate taxes are high. I'm owner occupied.
Well, you should, you should, what it should happen is you get an assessment and you should always review the assessment. Unfortunately, a lot of people don't look at the assessment because it's not the tax bill yet and it doesn't have your taxes on it. It just, it has your assessment on it, but it has that status on it, whether it's owner occupied and, and what class they have.
Didn't you have a recommendation for us?
I'm just a homeowner, you know, all this is all new to me. I live in, like you say, a farm my whole life, so how am I supposed to know this unless someone tells me that I'm supposed to contact?
I think what Miss Commissioner Heine is saying is on that bill that you received that has your assessment, it says right on the bottom of that.
If there's something incorrect and you need to contact the, our equalization office to get it corrected. And that's usually how it should happen is you, people do need to review their assessments. And that's when people have their opportunity to maybe even to challenge their assessments. If, if, uh, the, if our equalization assessors have maybe missed something or got something wrong. And it does happen and we do make adjustments to assessments, but, uh. Or so a lot of times they, they're made right there in the office and they don't even come to us. So, um. I haven't talked to Michelle about this one, I don't think.
She had a recommendation letter in here that basically said that she rec, she would, um, the way I gathered it, she would recommend to deny the abatement.
It is unfortunate, I really, unfortunately, yeah, we, I feel like we have to deny it because, um, yeah, it's just, if we started doing this for everyone, it would. And going outside of the process that we have established, it would really create a lot of confusion and headaches.
Any further discussion from the committee? Hearing none, here.
I'll make a motion to deny the abatement.
I have a motion by Ryan. I think it's second.
I'll second it.
Second by Wanda to deny the abatement. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
We, we did not approve your. Yeah, yes, sir, that's.
Brian, you're up.
Welcome.
Thank you, uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Patty. Uh, our second quarter generated, or we, I should say, we collected eighty-five thousand in revenue. And so that second quarter underperformed as compared to June twenty twenty-four in terms of revenue. And the culprit was our June real estate, which was down from last year. Uh, last year there was twenty-one million dollars in real estate sales in Yankton County. And in June of this year, there was twelve million. So that results in a nine thousand dollar drop in revenue in my office because of the lost transfer fee revenue.
That's a big decrease from May to June, yeah.
That June last year was exceptionally good and this was kind of average. Uh, so we're just paying the price of our success last year. But the good news, uh, Dan, is that our twenty twenty-five revenue pace is still ahead of twenty twenty-four by about two thousand. That's thanks to a strong first quarter and also a strong first two weeks of this month. Uh, last year was a three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollar revenue year for us. That was pretty good, so if we could stay on pace for that, you know, I think I would be happy with that. Commissioner Kettering, uh, asked us at some meetings earlier this year to keep the commission informed on how our budgets are coming along. Um, and I'll start putting this on the report that I submit to the packet. But our office spending for the second quarter was a little over four thousand below budget. So our expenses are coming in as expected. Uh, at the halfway point of the year through June thirtieth, or should I say at the fifty percent mark for our budget, we spent forty-seven percent of our budget. So three percent below, which results in about nine thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. And so we'll, we'll continue to strive to stay at that below budget pace, expect we will. Uh, just looking over some of the individual numbers, we had thirteen hundred and thirty-eight cash transactions in the second quarter. Birth certificates, death certificates, marriage records, they were all up from last year. Mortgages and mortgage satisfactions were up from last year. Uh, deeds were down and of course, transfer fee revenue was down. Uh, total real estate sold through June thirtieth this year was forty-four million as compared to fifty-one million. In, uh, second quarter twenty twenty-four, and again, that's due to that underperforming June, as I called it. Any questions?
Move approval of the registered deeds report.
Second.
Got a motion by Dan, second by Don to approve the second quarter register deeds report. Any further discussion or questions?
Thank you, Brian.
Great, thanks, Brian, as always. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Ambulance Troy.
Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I'll, uh, start off with the report that was in your packets. Second quarter report, take a look at the, uh, total number of run reports we had for the second quarter. It was six hundred and eleven. So we did about seventy more calls, seventy more run reports in the second quarter than compared to the first. Uh, however, when you take a look at, uh, the transport, transports versus no transport, the percentages were about staying, still at about seventy-one percent of those calls. Were we transporting patients to the hospital and about twenty-nine percent of them were not transporting a patient. Excuse me, um, that doesn't mean that, uh, no transport is not a billable call. We can still, we can still bill for treat no transports and the lift assists.
Do you think in the future you could break down that no transports? Cause it'd be nice to know the percentage of those that left are, are refusal or the, or the no treats or the lift assists. Cause I know we've, we've talked about for a couple of years, reviewing the lift assist numbers. And it's probably been five, six years since we.
You mean going forward or do you mean for this one and let no?
No, going forward, going forward, yeah.
Yeah.
Cause, cause that's something we've discussed and, you know, he, he doesn't know what we want unless we let him know, so appreciate.
Absolutely, yeah, I'll.
Thank you.
Do that going forward. Uh, you can see that we transferred sixty-nine patients out of a Verisacadore Hospital to other facilities. That was to Sioux Falls, Sioux City, uh, Norfolk, um, nine of those sixty-nine were, um, transporting patients from the hospital out to the airport to go to a fix twenty to be flown out. Um, those also included a couple of transports to the nursing home and such. But, uh, the vast majority of those were into facility transports to Sioux Falls mostly. Uh, we sent five hundred and seven pavement claims to our clearinghouse in the second quarter. And, uh, as you can see underneath there, um, eighty-five, almost eighty-five percent of those were perfect pass claims, meaning they needed no intervention. Once our billing staff sent them, uh, for payment, they didn't need any intervention. Some of them did need to, uh, be corrected, um, and were sent back, but eighty-five percent is still a good number.
Troy, like the clean after, what, so is that after what we do an adjustment, then ninety point five percent of them are accepted? Or what does that number mean?
Yeah, clean after Waystar means that, uh, so we submitted, uh, claims, eighty-five percent of them were good. Uh, Waystar cleaned up another, what, six point three percent of them.
What happens to the other, you know, other?
Ten percent.
They come back and, uh, they are fixed for whatever reason. They might have the wrong insurance on them, they might have a different type of insurance. So that's why you see the number of claims is higher than the number of transports. Because when they come back and get resubmitted, they're just counted as another claim.
Do we have, you know, a running total of, I, I, I realize sometimes things will have to get kicked back and reprocessed. But is there a percentage we have of the, you know, like total claims for the quarter that have, have made it through, you know? Cause, you know, there's, yeah, about nine point five percent that, you know, are going through again, but what percentage of those? Is it, you know, is a hundred percent eventually processed? Is it ninety-eight, you know, I guess I don't know what that number.
Yeah, I can break it down.
It's never gonna be a hundred, probably.
Probably not a hundred percent, no.
But if that was, you know, I would hope that that would be higher than that. And I don't know what that would be, uh, you know, another color of ones that maybe just needed a little more attention to that.
Uh, name your color and I'll put it on there. It's, uh, it, it's something that you can break down, uh, so I can, I can include that next time too.
Thank you.
Revenue versus expenses, um, just over three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars of expenses in the second quarter. Our revenue was up twenty thousand to two hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. So just a difference, so since the expenses were down. So just a difference. So since the expenses were down and the revenue was up, sixty-six thousand dollars was the difference. We have spent forty-nine point four four percent of our budget at fifty percent way through the year. And that means that the cost per resident for the second quarter, which is two dollars and eighty-one cents per county resident for the ambulance service. Any other questions on that? If not, it, those, uh, those other two graphs that I included, as you recall, when, uh, the Mitchell Fire Chief was here and there was a woman here from Vermillion that had, uh, uh, also, uh, spoke about tax districts and such, and, and she was representing a company that had a grant that was, uh, setting up, uh, an application for us to start collecting data. This is that application. About two weeks ago, we got our app set up. And so I just kind of wanted to show you some of the stuff that we can collect on here. So that first one that shows the dots on the map, uh, you can see that it broke it down to where all the call locations are. Eighty-seven percent of the calls, uh, for the second quarter were in the city limits of Yankton. Um, five percent of them were in the lake area. And then the remaining seven percent were elsewhere in Yankton County. That includes all the other towns and, and rural areas. So the green dots represent a call that's in a municipality. So everything that's green in that center, that's all clustered. That's all in the city of limits. Uh, in city limits of Yankton, the larger the dot is, that means that those are repeated calls. So you see.
The same place?
Yeah. So like, uh, in the northeast part of town, that larger dot, that's the airport because we go out to the airport quite a bit for fixed wings. The one in the southwest part of town there, that's the nursing home. So, uh, but that also works for residences too. If we go to a residence repeatedly, it makes a bigger dot for us. And we can zoom in quite a bit. I mean, we can zoom down to street level on this. I just wanted to show you the entire county to where all those calls were.
Really, really appreciate these graphs. Very, very nice job.
Thank you. And then, uh, the incident type, I just thought that was interesting. And that is just second quarter. You can see the types of calls, uh, that we responded to in the second quarter, the, the different reasons for dispatch for that. Uh, just a couple of other notes. Sammy Rottenbacher has been hired as a full-time builder to replace Brenda Goble. She's, uh, Brenda is retiring at the end of this month. So we have hired Sammy to replace her. Uh, Sammy is already medical builder for a clinic or was, was a, a builder for a clinic here in town. Uh, she was using Waystar Clearinghouse Services already, so she's familiar with that. That's the same clearinghouse that we use. So that's half of the training right there. Um, Brenda is going to continue to do a few part-time hours in the month of August, just to kind of help make it a smooth transition. And Sammy will be starting with us this coming Monday. Our full-time staffing is in really good shape right now. We have five full-time paramedics, six full-time EMTs, and two of those full-time EMTs are currently enrolled in paramedic school. Uh, one of them graduates next month and the other one will graduate in December. So we have two EMTs that will become paramedic level. And the last thing I have, I just want your opinion. I mentioned this at the budget hearing, but I would like to know what you guys' opinion is on getting the remount done on that ambulance right now. Um, talking with Arrow again today, they still have that one chassis left at their facility. The, just to remind you, uh, the remount will cost one hundred and seventy-four thousand six hundred and sixty-three dollars, and we currently have one hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars sitting in an accumulation fund. So there will only be a difference of three thousand six hundred and sixty-three dollars that we would have to come up with and
How much?
Three thousand six hundred and sixty-three dollars is all we would need right now at this point. Um, that'll easily come out of my current budget because I have some line items like maintenance and, and supplies that we are pretty far ahead on right now. So finding that extra thirty-six hundred dollars would not be an issue at all. If we wait, um, two things are gonna happen. The cost is gonna significantly increase, uh, because we will have to order a new chassis. And that's the other part of the problem is in talking to him today, he said that he has ordered twenty twenty-five chassis that he hasn't even seen yet. They haven't even gone into production yet. They are way behind on getting their chassis, um, uh, manufactured. And so the wait time is extremely long. If we were to get the chassis that they have at their facility right now, we would be able to take the ambulance that needs remount at this time to them. And it would be done in probably about, uh, about ten to twelve weeks, probably. We could potentially have it by the end of the year if we were to go ahead with this. So, um, my concern is that it's gonna cost a lot more if we wait with this. So when, when we're talking probably, uh, probably ten to twenty thousand dollars more is what it'll cost, even if we wait for just a year. And then trying to get a chassis will probably push us back another, uh, at least six to twelve months, depending on where they're at at that point. Any thoughts on that?
I think we probably need to wait as tight as the budget is this year. I think we, my, my, uh, opinion is we just wait on that, run it as long as we can.
How long is that bid good for?
This was the bid that was presented last December and he honored it again for this six months.
Here like last time or something.
Yeah, a couple of weeks ago I was here. So the bid is, uh, he'll honor it, uh, as long as if we decide to take this, he'll honor it. If we decide to wait, he's gonna end up selling that chassis to somebody else and we'll have to rebid it down the road.
I get that. My guess, Mike, I guess I'm not very clear. My question is, how long do we have to think about this?
If someone, if someone pulls the trigger tomorrow, we don't have any more time to think about it than that.
He did not give me a specific timeframe on this bid, but I, that's what John said is exactly right. If they sell the chassis tomorrow, then it's gone.
These funds that you said, the one seventy, that's set aside and we set aside that specifically over the past three or four years.
Correct. That was a, that was a fund specifically for, uh, he set aside for ambulance purchasing uh, over the last three or four years. Last year was the, or this year was actually the only year that, that no money was put into it. But, uh, probably, oh, I guess that's about right. Probably about four years. We've set some money aside and so it's sitting at a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars right now. Would we have to put that out for bid? Would we have to put that out for bid, Patty? Okay. So that's something that'll sort the process down. Is it two weeks that you have to put out for bid?
And it'd have to be on the agenda item too.
Oh, yeah.
But I guess I don't, I don't know what I can, at budgeting, we, I don't think we approved that when we went through the budget.
And just for clarification, the fact that he's making the second quarter ambulance report does not rise to the level of putting it on the agenda.
So, yeah, so my question is.
So you gotta come back in two weeks.
And that's what I'm wondering is, is it, is it worth me doing that or are we gonna just wait? Or do I just have to come back?
I don't, I don't, we, we approved that. Did we approve that in the budget that we approved? I thought we scratched that. And if we did, then what? We're gonna approve a provisional budget that won't have that in there. Cause when we talked about it as budgeting, we weren't gonna do that this year. So are we gonna go back and, and change that in the budget before we approve his?
Who are you asking?
Well.
Are you asking Mr. Larson as the?
Decision that we need to make as a commission, cause we, when we went through the budget, we didn't approve the remount. As I understand it, and now if he's gonna come in, then before we even approve the final budget, we'll already be outside of that.
Would it be done this year, Rachel?
So Arrow told me that if we decide to pursue this, they will work with us and they will push it back far enough that the finished date of the ambulance wouldn't be until after the first of the year. And so we can take it out of the twenty-six budget.
And, and you know, I, I understand the position, but the conversation, as I remembered, is we have, you know, two really good ambulances and this is, this is probably the least nice out of the three. But it's still serviceable.
So it's still usable, yes, but.
So that's kind of my, at least that's my position. There's four other commissioners here. I would prefer, uh, especially as tight as this budget is, is to wait. We have two very good, well, really three very good ones. This one, I think the main concern is it doesn't have the power lift. Is that correct?
Yes, but that one hundred and seventy-four thousand does not include a power load. That would be just the remount. It's gonna cost two hundred and five thousand if we put the power load in it and we don't have that. So we'll just get the ambulance remounted and we'll figure out the power load later.
But, but what would be the point of upgrading it and then not putting a power?
Uh, saving about fifteen thousand dollars probably.
But.
And sending it out for non-lifting things.
I guess how, how I remembered and, and the people I know that I talk in, in the, the ambulances, if we're gonna do it, let's do it right and put a power lift in it because when, sometimes you have to lift big things in the ambulance and that's where a lot of your injuries call. And if, if we're gonna, if we're gonna upgrade it, which I think we should wait, why don't we wait a year and then upgrade it to a power lift? And then, well, then we'll do it right.
Don't we have twenty thousand dollars in the budget for machinery and equipment?
Uh, that is for, uh, in, in twenty-six, yes.
And you're asking for three thousand.
I'm asking for three thousand more than
Than the twenty?
Available, yes.
And then we still won't have a power lift ambulance.
Uh, no, and it, it wouldn't be twenty thousand more. It wouldn't be three thousand more than the twenty. We could take the three thousand out of that twenty.
That's what I was asking.
So my understanding is this, is if, if, if we go ahead and approve the remount, that's gonna come out of the twenty twenty-five budget that is set aside. That would, it would not affect the twenty-six budget. A hundred and seventy-one, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for a new ambulance would not affect the twenty twenty-six budget at all. Is that?
That is.
Looking at it and understanding that correctly?
Yes, the, the one hundred and seventy-one thousand doesn't affect the budget at all, whether it's this year or next year. It's that thirty-six hundred dollars, whether we take that out of the twenty-five budget or we take it out of the twenty-six budget. Uh, I am well ahead in our supply budget right now and our supply line, I should say. And well ahead in our maintenance line too, that I feel that we'll have that left over by the end of the year. So we can, we can use it off of those line items. So there wouldn't be any supplement to the budget for this year, just for that money.
We could, yeah.
No, no, I get that.
You have to come back.
All right, I'll come back in three weeks, three weeks.
Well, August fifth.
Yeah, that's.
Whenever that is.
That's three weeks from today, right? I think we have five Tuesdays.
So, some months have five.
I think we have five Tuesdays this month, so it's three weeks. I'll come back in two weeks, but you won't be here.
But yeah, you can come back in two.
And you're requesting out the twenty twenty-five budget?
Yeah, we can easily do it out of the twenty twenty-five budget.
What, what's the amount you're gonna be asking for?
Thirty-six hundred.
Thirty-six hundred dollars.
And it's, we're gonna replace it and then not put a power lift in it, correct?
That's, that's correct. We can do the power load.
So what, what is?
We're only gonna, they're only gonna transport skinny people.
What require, if we wanna put it in a power lift, what are we gonna have to do? Are we gonna have to take it back to this company? At a later date?
No.
Take the cab off or what, what is the procedure to put a power lift in?
It will take, uh, it will take one day to put a power load in and, uh.
Will we do it here or will we have?
We can do it here. It depends on which company does it. We can do it here. Stryker will actually come and install it for us.
What will that cost?
Uh, it depends on what kind of a deal they give us, but you're probably looking at around twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars for a brand new one. Uh, they do, Stryker does have other options, uh, for, uh, used power loads that would cost less, less. Uh, and also their demo power loads that cost less.
According to page three of the submission that the ambulance put in before, it would cost thirty-one thousand four hundred and ninety dollars.
But it'd probably be cheaper just to do it right away rather.
That's it. That's it, Arrow. That's if Arrow does it. But also Stryker will do it. Cause Stryker is the company that makes the power load. And they'll send somebody to our garage and do it right there and.
What will Stryker charge?
Um.
Just yes.
I think we should move, we're off the topic of the budget or the quarter report. So we're leaning into stuff that's not on the agenda. I think we should move on.
Move on.
I'll come back.
August fifth.
Put, put it on the agenda for August fifth.
Move to approve the ambulance twenty twenty-five second quarter report as presented.
Motion by Wanda, second by Ryan to approve the ambulance second quarter report. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. And motion carries.
Thank you all.
Thanks.
Thanks, Troy. Okay, so.
I don't see Lucy for item fifteen. However, my understanding is that's just a regular cost of living adjustment, correct?
Just the thing which we got.
How much is it going up by?
So why are we saying, why are we giving an outside third party contractor a three percent raise every year? Or, or a?
Is it, does it say that in the contract?
Yes, it does.
Well, maybe next time we renegotiate the contract, we think about that.
Okay.
However, having said that, on page.
It's a hundred and sixteen dollars.
Yeah. On page one, article two, paragraph three, that needs to be stricken.
Article two, paragraph three?
Yep. Well, it says approve the public defendant pay agreement. So then let's not approve it if we can't strike that.
It says, okay, Danny, I thought I just, that's, so we can, it's an agreement.
Because
But it's already.
Because that doesn't even make any sense anymore.
This, this particular contract as written was basically approved on May twen- May third of twenty twenty.
This is, I think, the, what, twenty twenty-two is when it was.
Yeah, but it automatically renews and can.
You wanna change, you'll have to change the next week.
Yes.
Or put it on the agenda.
Yeah. Commissioner Loest at the time approved it with the automatic increases in there.
Yes.
What?
So.
Uh, cause you, you weren't involved when this was initially done. Commissioner Loest is the one who did that. Is that correct? Cause you were on the board. Yeah, I remember for some reason.
I would have to look in the year twenty twenty-two. I'm pretty sure I was.
You, you were involved in this?
Well, I wasn't involved in negotiating it. I believe that was Ms. Loest and Mr. Healy negotiated, brought it before the board.
Patty, does it even need to be voted on? Cause it's in the contract. It automatically increases every calendar year.
Right.
So I think it's on May twenty-second of next year. Needs to be addressed. It needs to be addressed. Yeah. Correct.
Well, we also need to address that paragraph because he doesn't even practice anymore.
Yeah, I think it's automatically increased. So we don't need commissioner approval. Correct. But we wanna make sure that we have a, yeah, a mark on our calendar that next year in May, we renegotiate this contract. Okay?
Well, because she was here in May to talk about it. But it says it automatically renews. So it wasn't much of a.
I, I understand that.
Okay.
But we didn't, we didn't renegotiate it at that time. So now we gotta wait till May of next year to renegotiate it.
Got it.
All right. Mark that on your calendar.
Move on.
All right. Approved twenty twenty-six provisional budget.
Let's open it for public comment, Mr. Chair.
Is there any public comment?
Somebody's rushing to the podium.
I see someone jumping up and rushing.
Hi Dana.
Dana Schmidt from the Yankton Community Library. Um, last time I was here, I was just asked a question about if we were the only library in the state that charges for county cards. And I said I would get back to you with some information. So we did some research. Um, and as I mentioned last time, there are libraries that are set up with just multiple different methods of funding. And we are currently the only library in the state that charges for county residents for library cards. Um, however, there are libraries in the state that have done so in the past. And in talking to libraries, there were a couple of libraries that talked about that this is something they may be moving to in the future. Um, as county funding is decreased and changes. So it's not unheard of, um, and throughout the country, it is something that does happen as well. Um, and so there are, we are asking for twenty-four thousand for twenty twenty-six, which makes up about two point five percent of our budget. And so just as an example, in twenty twenty-four, Deadwood Public Library, um, which is in Lawrence County, Lawrence County provided nearly forty-nine percent of that library's total budget. And there are seven other libraries in the state that are funded at about fifty percent or more by the county. And there are ten libraries in the state that are funded entirely by the county. So that just kind of gives you an idea that there is a lot of difference that way. Um, and there, I mean, there's everything from zero percent to a hundred percent throughout the state of how things are funded. So even though we are the only one, I do think it is something that we can think about as an innovative and. An innovative and reasonable way to help allow residents to um, that want to access more services at the library. That they can um, contribute a small annual fee to help the library continue to provide these services. We do have eight hundred seventy county cards currently, as of the, as of the end of twenty twenty four. Um, and so that's a potential for seventeen thousand dollars in revenue with just that small minimal fee. And again, we have lots of services that we provide that people do not have to have library cards for. In twenty twenty four, we offered four hundred thirty six programs for people of all ages, from storytimes to after school programs. Family events, entertaining and educational performances, and programs for adults like craft nights, therapeutic writing, and seed library. Um, we also had over six thousand uses on our public computers and over ten thousand sessions on our wifi. And our summer reading program, which is going on right now, is very popular and you can do that with or without a library card, so a lot going on. Um, and then I also wanted to give some history of the fees, we went back in the minutes, Linda went back in the minutes and. Found that our first contract between the city and the county was set up in nineteen ninety four. And at that time, the county had agreed to pay thirty dollars for each family, for each family card that was issued. And so the county was billed per county card and that would happened quarterly. Um, that agreement was set for two years, and then in nineteen ninety six, residents began paying five dollars per family card. Um, so that's been since nineteen ninety six to twenty nineteen, county residents paid five dollars for cards. So for twenty three years, the fee was set at five dollars, and then it went up to twenty dollars in twenty twenty. And you're right, that did happen at the same time that um, funding went from twenty four thousand to fifteen thousand from the county. But um, I do still think it is just a small. Fee that can be paid for the amount of services that we have and with the services that have gone up over the years, so. I do have um, a chart that I can hand out to you guys that shows that history of what the funding was and what those fees were, so. That's what I have for you, unless you guys have additional questions for me.
I'll hand them on, thank you.
Any further public comments? Seeing no one jumping up to speak, we get uh. Discussion from the commission.
Yeah, I might. Start out.
Lean into your microphone also that the public.
But my past history being in uh, in banking finance, uh. I had some difficulty in uh, adjusting uh, to the processes and the terms. If the state uses uh, relative to uh, their financial analysis and. And what they call uh, a balanced budget. Uh. Completely different than what I believe uh, almost all uh, businesses uh, would use. So thinking about what we did uh, at our last meeting, adjusting items. Uh, on the, on the initial budget handed out, I. Uh. Went through uh, the, that budget and identified the revenue and expenses that were in it. And uh, reviewed it with Patty uh, today. And uh, I think we're in concurrence of these amounts, or maybe one or two of them are a dollar off or something. But it it shows a total uh, fund revenue of eleven million seven hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty. Five hundred and twenty seven dollars. It shows total expense of sixteen million six hundred and forty two thousand and ninety nine dollars. Obviously, that's a quite, quite a difference. Now, there are a number of things that. Because of special funds uh, and so forth, that offset that. I think uh, Patty indicated that the, the projection that. That you had on your document was a total expenditure should be like thirteen million. And and.
Yeah.
And and that's probably because of the four million in carryover revenue from the previous year. So. Uh. I, I don't think uh, we, we have a, a terrible disaster this year. Uh, but if we don't carry over that money uh, from cuts in this budget. Or increases in the revenues, next year, it'll be very much different. And.
Where are we gonna get four million dollars in revenue? Well, I get that, but he's saying keep the money in the general fund or make more revenue. Correct?
No, I'm saying, this is the general fund expenses, it doesn't include a number of other expenses that go on in the county. This is just the general fund. You you aren't, and you aren't approving the budget for the, for the entire county, you're approving the general fund budget. Now, I talked with uh, Jeff at Pier and uh. He uh, he indicated that Patty has been doing it uh, exactly towards uh, by their procedures and what they call work here. Uh, so uh, you know, uh, it's just a process in the way they're looking at it. But if we keep spending four hundred thousand, or four million dollars more than we take in. Someday, our special funds are gonna be gone, and I think that'll be two years from now.
Or less.
Or less.
You know, I, Mr. Chair upon my head of the floor, uh, you know, I I agree with what Don's saying and. And I guess I just wanna bring some things to your attention, I I handed you out some of the uh, some of the uh, paperwork I got. Uh, at the National Association for Counties, it's in Philadelphia and. These budget cuts that are coming, they're calling it the big shift. And what those are gonna do is shift massively uh, federal programs onto the state and local government. Uh, those ones that support health and human services, and we're gonna see federal and state support. Continue to um, I guess not be there for us. In addition, we're gonna uh, run into big problems with less infrastructure and grants. More unfunded mandates coming for, from the, both the state and the federal government, so they call it the, the big shift. Um, and it's gonna fundamentally change how counties operate and the services that we pers- um, provide. Um, some of the areas I'm really concerned about, and Commissioner Kettering brought this up last year, is the way that FEMA uh, operates. FEMA might totally go away, but what I heard this past weekend is if FEMA survives. It's really just gonna be a forty eight hour roll where they come in and drop up some water and then leave. And local governments are gonna then be responsible for footing the entire bill, and we may or may not ever be reimbursed for that. Uh, could you imagine how we would deal with this twenty nineteen flooding with this budget? I I don't think we could do it. Uh, Medicaid and SNAP. We're looking at over a trillion dollars of costs being shifted to Medicaid alone. Um, and an estimated seventeen million Americans will lose coverage. How do you think this is gonna affect our ambulance? If you think we're, we're, it's costing us three to four hundred thousand dollars a year, we better get ready for that number to double. Um, and it's coming and starting in twenty twenty six, and again, this is the largest uh, social funding shift in American history. Uh, again, we're losing local control and, uh, you know, through certain other policies. And this is a shift between. Income tax basically being placed on properties tax, and and so we, we gotta decide what we're, we're gonna do. We only have so many options, do we scale back the services that we provide? Do we wake, raise taxes, or do we um, take some dramatic steps to be more efficient? And we're gonna have to, have to figure this out together. But like Don said, this is not gonna get easier, this is gonna get harder.
Those other special funds. Um. They generate revenue for, they're set up for their, those funds. That, that money revenue they get or the expenditures doesn't come out of the general fund. It comes out of their own fund and we receive in like passes. Taxes and.
One thing we can maybe do to increase our income a little bit is. Be a little more mindful of where we're putting our county money on, at what interest rate, she said. For the second year in a row.
I I spoke with Minnehaha County on, on how they do that, and they actually have several funds set up. And I, I, they generate millions of dollars in revenue with the taxes that they collect. Before it is uh, then redistributed out. And you know, actually, that, that's one of the positive things I got that, that Minnehaha got. Uh, is they do a, a local financial action network, where they bring a bunch of business leaders and community members. And have them go over the budget prior to the county. And give their recommendations, and maybe that's something that we need to start looking at as well.
No.
Spending money again, man.
Well, they do it for free, no, like the Sioux Falls Financial Network, they, they, it's, it's all donated. Uh, from what Tom Greco said, they, they might uh, buy those guys lunch one day. Uh, but they, they do it as a community service type event, so, and it's been really successful in Minnehaha County.
For the, for the purpose uh, of tonight, today's meeting. Uh, we, we, we need to sign the provisional budget. And and that's, that's probably what we went through two weeks ago and what we got and what's on here. Uh, I just want everybody to know and understand that uh, we're spending more money than we got coming in. By about twenty five percent. And with the grants and everything else, it's gone away.
It's not gonna be pretty.
Well, and.
It's not gonna be pretty, but here's the deal, this is America. This is Yankton County, and we have survived for over, you know, how many hundreds of years? And we're gonna figure out a way to survive many more years. I don't see Yankton County going bankrupt in the next five years, or ten years, or twenty years. And obviously, there's challenges here, and the state and the federal government are saying, well, we're gonna cut this, this back by so many billions of dollars, okay? Well, somewhere along the line, if they're gonna shove it down onto the counties. Somewhere along the line, they, the state or the federal government has to figure out a way to help us out, either less unfunded mandates. Or, or increased property taxes or something, it's, it's. It's not a, it's not a uh, doom or gloom situation for us. It's, it's just telling us that we gotta tighten our belt buckles and make sure that we, we spend our constituents' tax dollars correctly. And looking at Yankton County's budget. There's not, there's not a lot of places where we can cut, unless we don't wanna put new rock on any roads. Unless we don't wanna do, fix any bridges, there's no place where we got room to cut. So we can sit here and we can complain about the state or the federal government cutting all of these funds. But it just means we gotta work a little harder, make sure that we're staying above the water. And um, I'm not saying that, that we, you know, what I'm saying is we do need to tighten up our budget.
And I think we have.
And we have, and um, we just gotta figure out a way to, to generate more revenue. I mean, look, look, look at our ordinances, we, we can't build uh, CAFOs for, we're an agricultural county, we can't build CAFOs.
Then we just approve one last meeting, the biggest one that's ever been built?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
But, but we need to build more of them, we need to build data centers, or, or look outside the box and generate revenue. That's the biggest thing that we need to think, to work on, we.
Or we could use a half a cent sales tax.
There, there's not much room to cut expenses. And and that's just what we, it's, it's a challenge that we have to step up to, so. I, I guess I'm, I'm gonna come down off of my soapbox and, and move on, so. Can I get a motion or any more discussion on the provisional budget?
I, I guess I'd, I'd like to, you know, with what we decide tonight, I, I still think we need to go through and. And take a long look at discretionary spending and, and if it's not mandated by law, I don't know if we should be funding this. You know? It, I, I feel that we need to go and, and we, there, there are areas that we could still cut and save money. And if people want some of these different services or. Uh, this funding for, for nonprofits, then they could take out a petition and say, hey, we wanna raise. Property taxes to support all these organizations, but I guess where I'm at, I, I still think, um, we could make some cuts. So I'm gonna probably be a no on the.
You have to, you have to remember too, that if, if you um. Lower anymore.
It affects the.
Revenue for next.
And then we'll, well, no, and then we'll have to use the contingency fund and maybe we'll, it'll be over that, so we still have to.
We have to be careful. Cause doesn't it, it doesn't affect the levy? If we go too low?
No.
Okay.
I, I guess what I'm talking about is a, with, with what I see happening in the future for county government. Was we have to see what is the role of county government, is it to fund everything, or is it not? And, and again, I hate to pick on the ambulance, ten percent of our budget is tied up in the ambulance. We're having a, basically a fifteen, sixteen million dollar, and we're, we're going one point five million dollars for the. Ten percent of our budget, more than that, is going to the ambulance, is it a great service? Yes. But there are other options to fund an ambulance.
Which causes increase in property taxes, and how does that help?
What, what's that?
Which causes an increase in property taxes to the people who actually pay taxes.
So. The, what option do you have then?
We, we also have ten to fifteen percent of our budget is, is the sheriff in the jail.
Yeah, but that's public safety, which we're mandated by law to do.
It's a public safety.
If we wanna, if we wanna, it's not mandated by state law though, the counties can do a lot of things. We're authorized in state law to run a hospital, do we suggest we start a hospital? Because it would help people?
No, no, and, and the thing of it is, is we had a bill in front of our legislators, and two of our legislators voted against it. Making ambulance services essential services, which would have made a, a, a complete difference in how our ambulance was funded.
Don't disagree with that.
So, I mean, hopefully they'll change their mind and we'll get that accomplished next year, but.
I, I just see if we're, if we don't take some cuts this year, next year is gonna be a lot worse. Is, is where I, where I see it, so.
I made a motion to approve the provisional budget.
I got a motion by Wanda, second by Ryan to approve the provisional budget. Further discussion, hearing none, all in favor, aye?
I wonder if we should do a.
Oh, public, uh, roll call? Roll call vote, please Patty.
Wanda?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Dan?
No.
John?
Yes. Okay, motion carries. Scribbled online.
I move to approve the June twenty seven, twenty twenty five minutes.
Got a motion by Wanda, second by Don to approve the.
June twenty seven, twenty twenty five.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same nay.
I move to approve the June thirty special meeting, twenty twenty five meeting minutes.
Got a motion by Wanda, second by Dan to approve the June thirtieth minutes, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries.
I'll go then and go for three, I'll move the, approve the. I'll go then and go for three. I'll move the approve the July one twenty-two-five meeting minutes.
Second.
Got a motion by Wanda, second by Ryan to approve the July first twenty-two-five minutes. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. Claims.
I move to approve the claims.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Wanda to approve claims. Just a point of discussion, claims where juvenile detention was twenty-nine thousand, over little over twenty-nine thousand this for last month. And we just received the letter that the cost per day is gonna be five hundred and fifty dollars a day. Instead of four ninety-nine. So for twenty, starting January one. Um, all in favor to approve the claims?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Time for public comment?
No, no, you gotta wait till you get up there.
Name's Rick Goodrich. I live in Yankton. We always hear about how all these cuts. And we hear politicians saying, oh, we're just trying to help you. Then you just hear on the news the state of South Dakota had a surplus in their budget. And they're cutting. Is anybody burning up in these legislators? Saying what the hell is going on here? Why is it always us that are paying taxes being screwed? I don't hear a lot of anger and when you do, they say, oh, you need to go to anger management. They won't let us.
It might be true.
We want to.
It costs too much.
I've never seen you angry.
But I'm just this is all I've been hearing. Cut this, cut this. And it's always us. We're getting screwed.
Well, I.
Some people, y'all are trying to fight for us. But it doesn't seem like there's a very very big fight. All we hear is, oh, he's not doing things right. Nobody's fighting. They're just saying it's wrong.
Yes.
I'm sorry you all have to hear me. But I'm just tired. I'm tired. It's always us. We pay our taxes every year. And it's still always us. So thank you for letting me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rich. Anyone else for cup public comments? Hearing none, seeing none? Public comment is closed. Commissioner updates?
Tomorrow, there is the opening of the new core building from, I believe, ten o'clock to two o'clock. The initial dedication in the morning and then eleven to two will be tours. And refreshment.
Notice for that, Corin?
Yes.
Okay.
And then Friday, we have the dirt shoveling. I don't know what you really call that groundbreaking for the new Rosman. And it was in the newspaper, I believe.
I haven't done the one for the twenty-fourth yet.
Okay.
I'll send that tomorrow.
And I'm done.
Okay, um, I do have one thing is we are pity is signing from our position after the fair this year. And so I do wanna get on the agenda next uh next meeting that we discussed advertising for that position, finding someone for that position so that we can keep continuity going there. I may know someone who's already interested in it here in Yankton. So we might have a very good candidate to fill that position already. So and then also just because I was talking to the Forest people last night, yes, uh, bear is coming. So it'll be here before the next meeting. So I'll definitely be making more of an effort this year to be there as much as I can, Phil.
Yeah. I got an announcement. The contact center has leased a building outside of this one. There's they're they're doing some remodeling on the facility where they're planning on moving into and the contractor basically said that they thought they could move in by October. Rebecca told me today that she's planning on making sure that she moves in there by the end of this year. So so they will.
So the contractor says October and she says December?
Well, just basically wanting to make sure that the contractor gets everything done. And and trust me, I can realize because my porch still isn't done after five weeks. So so anyway, I I thought that was a very encouraging announcement that she called me today to to announce that. So they did sign the lease on the building uh last week. And it's it's on Walnut Street, what's right behind your.
Seven hundred something, because I'm seven twenty-one. It's used to be the used clothing store.
So any any other comments?
Motion go into executive session?
Second.
Got a motion by Dan, second by Wanda to move into executive session. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. Opposed nay, motion carries.
Executive session. Now I, now it is.
Second.
Got a motion by Wanda, second by Ryan to move back into regular session.
Um, no matters were handled in personnel at this time. However, uh, we do have a bill for poor relief, which is county welfare MI twenty five zero two dash zero zero three. And I would recommend that we deny payment of that bill to McKenon of Vera Hospital.
Is that due to homeless from Rapid City?
Because they're listed as homeless Rapid City Pennington County.
Second.
I have a motion by Wanda, second by Dan to deny the request for Vera or McKenon hospitals for the homeless person from Rapid City. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries.
And then we have two items for next agenda. I, well, three, I guess. Um, the ambulance assistant supervisor wants to appear. Second one is we're going to talk about amending the handbook for harassment purposes. Oh, yes, and we need to have a open meetings review meeting, and we need to put that, I believe, in the handbook, so. And other than that, anything on for next meeting?
Yep. Well, I think I already got to one thing for the next meeting is discussing the position, so.
It's raining too.
For an extension.
Yep.
Does it? Sorry. I move adjourn.
Second.
What? Got a motion by Ryan, second by Dan to adjourn. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. It's.